All right, those wishing to address the board during the public comment agenda item 4.02 must turn in a public comment form before the start of the meeting at five o'clock, which is just in a second here. Any form submitted after the session is started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Are there any public comment forums that anybody needs to turn in? No? Okay, perfect. Oh, that timed out perfectly. It is five o'clock PM on Monday, March 11, 2024. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District, President and myself, Vice President Campbell, Director Barnes, Director Ed Scorn, Director Whitfield, Student Representative Laura Wittenberg, Sophia Willett is out at this time or not here yet. Superintendent Sean Woodward, District Leadership Team, School District Staff, as well as members of the community. President Bumpus will not be in attendance this evening. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online and our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while, excuse me, it may appear to the, the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on these issues, either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Moving on to Agenda Item 2.04, we have no changes to this evening's agenda, correct? All right, want to make sure. All right, and then moving on to Agenda Item 2.05, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated March 11, 2024.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve the agenda dated March 11, 2024. All in favor, raise your hands. All opposed? All right, the agenda item has passed four to zero. All right, Agenda Item 3.01, Staff Recognition Employees of the Month for February. This is Barnes. Go ahead and take it away.
Okay, so the MSD Employee Honor Roll is our employee recognition program and is aimed at providing our staff with recognition for their hard work. Anyone can nominate an employee for the Employee Honor Roll. All nominated staff members receive a certificate each month and are recognized on our website. At the end of the month, all nominations are reviewed and one classified employee and one certificated employee are selected as the two employees of the month. In addition, we recognize the employees of the month at a board meeting, and our employees for the month of February are as follows. I have the honor of acknowledging and recognizing our certificated employee of the month, Rachel Phillips, who I don't see here. But these are the two nominations that came in for Ms. Phillips. Nomination number one, I cannot say enough wonderful things about Ms. Phillips. She has been an incredible advocate for my child who has some academic struggles. She is kind, caring, and so patient. I feel so lucky that my child has her as a teacher. And nomination number two, Rachel is my son's teacher at Frank Wagner. She is such an excellent advocate for her students and works so great with parents to help facilitate learning and growth in her class. My son is improving so much and I am very thankful for her. I can speak from experience that all of these things are so true. I spent many hours volunteering in her class when my oldest son was in first grade with her, and she is an absolutely phenomenal teacher and we are incredibly lucky to have her in this district. So a huge congratulations to Rachel Phillips.
It's my privilege to acknowledge the parent educator from Frylands, Mary Burns. Nomination one, Mary is always going above and beyond her work. She is always keeping up to help staff and students when it is needed without the ass. If we don't have subs or duties to be filled, she volunteers. If she sees help being needed to help students or staff, she's there. She puts in a lot of extra time out of her heart from kindness. She works very hard at her job and never seems to be recognized for it. She's a great colleague to work with. Nomination number two, she is always eager to step up and help where needed and goes the extra mile. She stays out to greet students after doing her crossing duties and volunteers to take extra recess duty when they're shorthanded. She offers her creative skills to decorate bulletin boards and shares new ideas with her team to support students in reading groups. I feel honored to work with her. Thank you so much.
And sorry, Mary is here. So fantastic. Thank you for coming, Mary. And I happened to get to present to Mary in class, and there are a lot of students in there and other staff members. And it was a testament to Mary how excited her students were when she was recognized. So I thank you, Mary. We're absolutely lucky to have you here.
Awesome. Well, we can continue the festivities with this on Agenda Item 3.02 because it is also, we're going to be recognizing Education Support Professionals Week, so we get to continue to celebrate. And Director Ed Scorn, do you want to read the proclamation as well? You get to do that tonight. I'm going to like to invite Kim Kershaman, Vice President, the Public School Employees Office Professionals up, and Carrie Estes as well, please.
All right, I'll read the Washington State Proclamation on the Education Support Professionals Month. Okay. Whereas education support professionals are involved in nearly every aspect of education, maintaining buildings and grounds, preparing and serving meals, keeping school facilities clean and orderly, assisting in the classroom, providing over 60% of all instructional hours to special education students, English language learners, and opportunity gap students, performing and conducting research activities, providing information technology and media services, administrative support functions, and safe transportation, creating a secure and healthy environment, and many other specialized services. And whereas more than 62,000 education support professionals work with and help students at Washington's University's College and Public Schools are the backbone of our public education system and deserve recognition and thanks for the outstanding work they do for this state. And whereas education support professionals are instrumental in fulfilling the state's responsibility to educate all students, and by supporting the learning environment, they serve as crucial partners with teachers, parents, administrators, and school boards. Now therefore, Jay Inslee, the Governor of the State of Washington, proclaims March 2024 as Education Support Professionals Month. And he encourages all of us to join in this special observance. So two certificates of appreciation I'll give to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you for all the employees you represent. Thank you, ladies, for representing all of those employees that make this district run. That is absolutely incredible. All right, Agenda Item 3.03, Sky Valley Education Center and Leaders in Learning High School. We get their annual report, which will be presented to us by the Director of Sky Valley Education Center, Karen Rosenkranz tonight. Karen, there you are, Karen. You guys can come on up, and Principal at Leaders in Learning High School, Tina Vinick. Come on up, ladies. We'll let you guys present your annual reports. Thanks for being here tonight.
And we should have a PowerPoint. So I did want to, first of all, thank you very much, and I did want to shout out to Karen, who is the president of Walla, which is the Alternative Learning Association. And she just put on an amazing, single-handedly, put on an amazing conference. And, and so it was really, it was great to walk in there and immediately you have something in common with everyone that's in the room. And so I think that's just a sort of an amazing thing, and she just did a great job. So I really appreciate that. I think she's in for a couple more years.
Yes.
So, um, as you probably know, that this is a requirement in the state that we do the alternative learning report every year. So one of the things that we did at Leaders this year that's a little bit different is everyone called it Leaders anyhow and left the other stuff off. So we just went with it. So we are Leaders High School unofficially because we're not going to change our entity because that would be, you know, an act of Congress and everything else. We're just trying on the name Leaders. So again, really working on equitable access and high expectations. And I think that's really, that's the work, the critical work that we're doing is tying into state standards and making sure that our students graduate ready for their next steps. So you'll see the pieces that are required, the full-time enrollment, the ratio of cert staff, and again, how they're assigned and how we support the district goals, evaluations, and again, new programs and high school classes. So headcount for us is really tricky because they do headcount on October 1st at the semester. Karen and I were calling each other back and forth. I got 10. How many did you get?
Just today.
Yeah. So I've got three today. And so what happens typically is, you know, as soon as October 1st hits and as soon as the state gives us our, our money, usually by the end of October, we get 15 more kids. So again, we're bringing money into the district, but it might not be in our budget. And so, and numbers are kind of interesting. So you'll see that, that. So we actually added a new program to Leaders this year, and so half of our, our school is actually online. And so we've done Leaders Virtual Academy. So any Leaders Virtual Academy is sort of a hybrid. So some kids are coming in just for one class. We just took in a nice young lady that's doing running start, snow aisle, and she didn't pass a government class. And that's what's keeping her from graduating at the end of this year. So of course, I mean, so yeah, so she's coming to us for the online piece and, and some supports and some phone calls and some reminder emails, a little bit of nagging here and there, but we're going to see this, this young lady be successful because of that flexibility in our programs. Our cert staff, we have four and a half. Our headcount is about 64, and again, it fluctuates. Because of the way that ALEs work, students have to make success every month. And after three months where they're not making progress, and that's determined by 60% in 60% of their classes, then we have to do something different. And at Walla, I kind of likened it to a speeding ticket. Where when you're, sometimes when that, that camera goes off, or when you're caught, it might be just that little frame in time. And maybe like you were going 20 miles under the speed limit before that, and further down the road, you're, you're screaming down at 80. But for this moment in time, you got whatever that timeframe is. That's what success is determined, that monthly progress. And so we put interventions in place. We, we had more time, so more time with kids. We ask them to do more. We do more reminding. And then we have an amazing counselor, the counseling intern this year that is phenomenal. And so he's actually doing a great job of outreach for some of these kids as well. We turn them around. Again, we at Skyward Grading, sorry, Leaders Virtual Academy, course descriptions are required for every class, and we build a written student learning plan for every student. So every, and we, we look at that for goals as well to make sure that we're meeting those state standards. And again, every month, every student, every course. The written student learning plan, it's pretty, pretty basic, beginning and ending dates, the things that are going to be taught, how many hours per week. The majority of our kids actually are not alternative learning. The majority of our kids are their seat time based. So then we claim those kids at the full standard rate for the state. And then other students that may, for a variety of reasons, might have a need to take care of a sibling at home. Or again, some of our online kids, those kids have a different type of learning plan because it's specific to each kid that comes in the door. Some of our data, right now, we are 46% male. The two that I have coming in tomorrow could change that. Special ed, we're about 20%. Again, I think that went up just a little bit in the last week. We have 14% of our kids that are on 504 plans. Are Black Indigenous people of color, we are 44%. Again, that number is going up again with the kids that are coming in. We are a poverty school, low-income school, so every student at our school gets free lunch and free breakfast. We do breakfast beyond the bell, so there are snacks in every classroom. Okay, so apparently I wasn't talking loud enough. Okay, so, and this is fairly typical for who we are. And, and again, it fluctuates a lot, but this is again fairly typical. So again, we're really working on building community. In the fall, we did a fun family event and, and we did a stop of provided food. We had, everybody came in, we had movies, we had all kinds of fun events and activities for people, really trying to do more outreach. We do online opportunities and then again, diversity, equity, and inclusion is a big part of who we are. And again, if you've come to our, our graduation, I think it's a pretty amazing thing to see the families that come together, and we'd like to replicate that, that feeling of warmth a few more times during the year. So that's, that's a goal for us. One of the things that we, the second year that we've done this, it's steady support over break. We know that break, although everyone looks forward to it, it can be a challenge for families. So again, we did it December 21st, and anybody that needed to get caught up or didn't need to get caught up, we had staff there, we had food there, and the idea is we're going to take care of you even over break. So again, weekly requirements, the students have to come in, this is for Leaders Virtual Academy. They have to make two contacts with their, their coaches and those, that's, that's Leaders staff. The state requires once, but we'd rather aim high on that one and, and meet that requirement. If a student isn't making progress, then we'll just say, you know what, you need to come onto campus a couple times a week. And so we do that reach, that outreach. I have a student who is so successful in LVA, the anxiety and depression just is overwhelming for this kiddo. But he'll come on and get help for math. And, and so I, again, it's really expanding those, those opportunities for a variety of students to, to get an education. For kids who are full-time LVA, they take three classes, kind of like a, like a community college, and then when they're successful there, then we give them another three. And so they still have the same opportunity for graduation and meeting those requirements as if they were in the classroom.
Are all students in the LVA, or is it just?
Right now, 20 students enrolled in at least one course with an 84% pass rate. So, so no, not everybody. It really depends. I have some kids that when we say, hey, I've got this great online course, it's like, yeah, I did that once, not going to do it again. Some kids are like, you know, that same, just the opposite. I don't want to talk to anybody in a classroom, so I want to do online. And I, one student that is an LVA student, that he, his path is, he's got it figured out. If he continues with this, does computer programming, he's going to work remotely and never have to leave the house. I mean, you know, we're still trying to bring this, this student in just for some of that positive one-on-one kind of, I mean, again, you need some interactions, and so we're trying to do that, but it really is so individualized to each student that needs it. So our bright spots, Leaders Virtual, this is our first year. We've kind of switched it up a little bit as we're going along. Students of the month, every month, we honor students, and the foundation has provided us with gift cards. So Student of the Month gift cards, and then also for attendance and improvement. And then one of the other things that we did this year is everybody reads. So we spend 20 minutes a day and our entire school just picks up a book. And so we're doing Leaders Readers, and so again, another really positive thing that we're, we're reinforcing. Spring quarter, kind of excited about this, three kids that we are going to help into running start. We didn't have that last year. And so interestingly enough, these three students are students who have done LVA. So now they actually feel ready. They feel like they're prepared to take the next steps. And I have one that's doing Lake Washington Technical Institute. And so, and we're meeting, again, our plan is we're going to meet them to start out with, we'll meet you for coffee in the morning one day a week, and then back off just because we want to make sure that, that they're ready and successful. We'll go up to Everett for the other two and just to do that same thing. It, it makes such a difference just to have that, that person that's, that you can go to because, you know, here you go from this small little campus where everybody knows your name to, I don't even know where I'm supposed to go from the parking lot, and how do I get help? So again, really working on that. We also did the OSSI grant. We got $50,000 that we've used for hopefully field trip to the UW. They haven't been super responsive right now, so we're working on that. And then also, we did Lake Washington Tech. For some of our kids, it's the first time they've ever set foot on a college campus. So last year when we went to the UW, you know, apple blossoms blooming, or cherry blossoms blooming, and it was beautiful. And these, these, they felt like, like they felt like they could do this. And so just inspiring that hope is a pretty amazing thing. And then our other thing is it funding parent support? Because I mean, we know that we need it. And again, our, you know, the shout out to our support staff is amazing, and we couldn't do this without them. Leadership and involvement, Walla, again, shout out to Karen, Fall Administrator and State Conferences. Part of the Washington Association of Latinos Administrators and Superintendents. Ongoing collaboration with the Alternative Learning Department at OSPI, and they are super responsive. You just pick up the phone and, and you have a thought and they have an answer. And then also Washington School Principals, Leaders of Color is another thing that I'm working on. Thank you so much for your support. Again, we're small, but we're making a difference.
Thank you so much, Tina. Appreciate that. Do you have some questions? All right, Karen, you're up.
Thanks. So. Thanks for coming to my conference, Tina.
One, one last thing, and I do want to say this truly heartfelt. That, you know, I mean, again, we have very different worlds, but I can pick up the phone and say to Karen, everything from, okay, I'm frustrated, help me with this, what do you think? Show me a picture of your grant run, I mean, any of that stuff, and I have immediate support. And, and so I really do value that, and that's something I think that not, doesn't happen.
So a lot of the parts of this report are going to be similar, so I'll just sort of breeze through. So Jesse, just, you know, try and keep up, buckle up. If you could go to the fourth slide, that one. I wanted to highlight the theme of this year's report, which is belonging and kindness, which is something that we're working on a lot at Sky Valley. Whoa, thanks. We had students and parents fill out these messages of love, and we literally wallpapered the staff room with it. And so it was fun before school, after school, or during lunch to watch staff come in and just walk around and read, read the hearts. And sometimes that just, oh, that's, that's why I do this after a long day. Slide number five, something to highlight that I'm just always amazed is that we continue, oh, Nick. Yes, that one, thank you. Is that we continue to grow. And you can see the trends there. As a matter of fact, since we started the year, and now we've started over 100 new students after the year started. So between October and now, I think last week, we enrolled 12. So they, they just keep coming. And I think that's largely because we were so flexible, we're there to serve families, whatever they need, we have the ability to change with the times and change with what people's need, and that is largely because we have a supportive board and district office. There are plenty of places that don't have that, and they aren't able to respond as, as flexibly as, as we are. The next slide is just that one, is something that we did in January. We did a survey of our families, and it's something we have all found interesting, just to see some of the reasons that people come to Sky Valley, what types of families come to Sky Valley, and how long they've, they've been there. See, next.
Karen?
Yeah.
You say our families come from 20 different school districts around the state. Is there one school district primarily that they come from, like Sultan or Marysville or?
I would say the two largest would be Sultan and Snohomish. And I'm sure that's largely due to their location.
What's the furthest from away, do you think?
Oh, gosh, we have had folks from Chalane before, the islands, San Juan Islands, Arlington, Smoky Point. Yeah, just really all over Bellevue, Seattle.
Okay.
And then if one, again, another one, that's the boring stuff. One, well, another one. Okay, I don't, we must have lost. I think in, in the original packet, there was, there were some pictures of a service project, oh, there it is, that our teens did for our K1 students. We received a large donation of books, of free books for kindergartners and first graders. So our adolescents went through all the books, put them in a collection, tied them up with ribbon or string, and wrote notes to the five and six-year-olds, and they all came and picked them up before winter break. And so that's what you see there. And what I love is the detail that the teens took with their, their choices. I think this one is, I always pay attention to the yearbook surveys, so I remember that you like Hot Pink. I chose these books because they are pink. So just a lot of super cute notes and little ones coming in to pick up books, which was pretty cool. And then if you go a little sooner than that. Oh, now, Lord have mercy. All right. We'll just go to the end. I think yours is a little different than. We'll just go to the end. I think yours is a little different than mine. Also, at the end, I hope you had a chance to watch the video. It's based on a children's book by Kristen Bell, and I think it might be at Director Whitfield's table or somewhere along there. And the story behind that is our office staff heard this book and they felt so strongly that Sky Valley was a purple school that they wanted to make a video. And their plan is to send it to Kristen Bell and see if she will come and visit. So we, we will let you know how that goes, but, uh, they did that just because they wanted to. And it's our office staff. Um, we're blessed with people who, they really believe in what we're doing. And when the first people you see, when you walk in the door are that passionate and all in, it makes a difference. It really does. And that's, that's all I've got for you. Again, just thank you so much for almost three decades of support.
Thank you, Karen. Do you guys have any questions?
We'll see if you can answer this, Karen.
Okay.
How many parking spaces do you have there at the school?
Not enough. That's the answer.
Would you like me to include the two-block radius neighborhood spots?
No, no, just the ones right next to it.
We just need to get that fence down and we can park in the grass across the street.
We've, yeah. Um, I don't think we have more than a hundred true parking spots, to be honest. Chuck and we have, um, over nine hundred students. So I would say parking classroom space. I, I would say in every essence. It's a wonderful problem to have.
Give me a problem with some of the neighbors?
I imagine, uh, you and Superintendent Woodward would tell me if I did.
I know you got connections at Purdy and Kerr, making it in the user parking area.
Yeah.
We try to remind our folks to be respectful and, and I think they largely are, but I'm sure it has an impact on the, the neighborhood when you're parked literally two blocks in all directions some days.
Did have one question. I was not able to watch the video and I logged on my credentials. I don't know if it's unrestricted or not when I logged into, to click on it. And so if you can, don't check, it has a request access on there. So I would love to watch the video though.
Yeah, it's, it's about three minutes and it's worth your time. I'll make sure you get that.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you ladies so much for giving your annual reports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item four point zero one, Student Representatives. Laura and Sophia. Go for it.
Thank you. Um, so we have lots going on in the next couple of weeks. Um, this Wednesday, three thirteen, we have the ACT Irish Stew and Soda Red fundraiser and homemade sourdos and noodles and, um, maple bars. And then, then what? Oh, caramel rolls. Um, sorry. Um, and then Thursday, three fourteen, we have the Pie Day Chavaganza. And then, um, Spirit Day is, or Spirit Week is next week. And so Monday is Decades Day, Tuesday is Twisted Tuesday, Wednesday is Carbon Copy Day, Thursday is Fairy and Pirate Day, and Friday is Interest slash Hobby Day. And then Wednesday, three twenty, we have the One Pot Wednesday. And then the Spring Bazaar is three twenty-one. And then Wednesday, April third, is the STEM Lunch fundraiser. Hi, can I ask what, what Car- Carbon Copy Day is? Like, what's Spirit Day that is?
Yeah.
So everyone is just gonna wear blue jeans and a black, like a black t-shirt. Or we have, um, Sky Valley t-shirts that say kindness matters on the back. So I'm guessing people will probably be wearing those too. Thank you. That is cool. Okay, first, we had class registration for next year at the high school. Uh, we worked on it all last week and it's pretty organized this year, which was nice. So kids can actually get it done. And then softball and baseball had their first games last week. Sports Med's five K is this Saturday at nine AM. It's their fundraiser and they really like people to come since they have few fundraisers and they need more funding. And then Tracks First Meet is at Lake Stevens this Thursday at four o'clock. And then next week, no, I think it's this week, the eighteenth, uh, ASB elections start for president, vice president and other positions. And then Culture Night will be at the high school on March twenty-eighth from six to eight. There will be various food and music from different cultures and everybody is welcome from the community.
Awesome. You guys have any questions?
Laura, do you know what true carbon paper is? You know, back in the day, when there was manual typewriters, when we filled out forms, we would have, if we wanted to write a letter in triplicate, write a letter, carbon paper, piece of paper, carbon paper. And, uh, that's where the term came from. And if you made a mistake, you gotta correct it three times. And there was no erase, no spell check. Anyway, reminded me of those days and you get it on your hands. You gotta try to find a couple of pieces of carbon paper and bring it, have people touch it, feel it, experience.
Back in the olden days, this is before it was easy to just send a text message. We have, I'm glad that you explained it, Chuck, because I think everybody under the age of forty probably did need to know that. That was awesome. Now, I, I was curious about what Carbon Copy Day was gonna be. That's really cool. And, uh, also how did signups for next school year go? It was like super, do you guys use Zello to do that, right? That's what.
Yeah, we use Zello. It was pretty good this year because they had it pretty organized, like you did on a paper first and then they did it on Zello. Only problem was like it wouldn't connect to Skyward, but I liked it more this year just because it had like the descriptions of things. There's more organized and easier, I guess, than Skyward, because Skyward looks a little older. I think it's more harder for kids. So this year is, it was better.
At least you didn't have to use carbon copy paper though. That's what's good. Thank you ladies so much. All right, moving on to Agenda Item four point zero two, uh, there are no public comments, so we can just keep going on to our business for tonight. We have one item under Business, Agenda Item five point zero one. Um, and it is, get there. First reading of Policy Update thirty-two, thirty-one, Student Records. And go ahead and entertain a motion. Is there a motion?
So first reading.
First, oh, it's the first reading, nevermind.
Yeah, no worries.
It's a consideration of revisions policy. Stick to the script, right? Uh, so Superintendent, would you, would you walk us through, uh, this update as well? Because I did have a couple of questions on this one.
You bet. So there is only one recommended change on this particular policy. And you will see there's a, um, strike through that WASD is recommending on the statement that a diploma may not be released until a student has made restitution for damages assessed as a result of losing or damaging school materials or equipment. Uh, they're obviously recommending that we remove this statement from the policy. Uh, this is actually, it's an interesting one because I've seen this in districts for years and years and years. And now there's actually a pretty old RCW that, uh, does not allow this to happen, yet it's still a very common practice across the state. Uh, the RCW actually states that withholding diplomas is only allowable when those damages exceed one thousand dollars. And, uh, let's say somebody owed twelve hundred dollars and they paid it down to nine hundred ninety-nine, you, you must give the diploma. Uh, the way this is written is written such a way that it sounds like we, we must withhold a diploma if there are fines and fees, et cetera. Uh, so I, I think WASD is just recommending everyone just finally clean this up and stick to what the RCW says.
So one of the questions I have with that, because what I did, I was looking for that was language that would be in place of that or whatever that is. And so does that mean that if someone has a five thousand dollar fine or something like that, not that that would necessarily be a common thing, it doesn't matter now, because we would actually have no policy at all to withhold anything.
Yeah. So, so, so we could, in our administrative procedure, or we could just put it in the policy, we take this out and simply put that RCW language in there that stipulates when we can withhold diplomas. And there's a whole lot of other stipulations in that RCW around if people can't afford it, what do you do? The, the, uh, and then you must actually, if you're withholding diplomas, you must track that on your website. How many diplomas, uh, in each year? Uh, how does that tie to various, uh, student demographic groups, et cetera? Uh, I did ask, uh, our high school, uh, Principal Brett Willie about this, uh, the history here in Monroe. And, and, uh, since he's been there, which I know it hasn't been a really long time, this, this isn't a common practice anyhow. I think people have talked about it statewide as maybe this isn't the way to go. Even if, let's just say someone did owe a couple thousand dollars that we were to withhold, uh, you can't withhold transcripts or grades and, and, and things like that. But, uh, yeah, I'm happy to bring it back for us, a second reading and just add some RCW language.
I think that would be helpful, at least just to add the RCW language to, to add in that, just that that always ties. I like it when our, our policies are tied to our laws as well. Reminds me, I need to double check and make sure I paid my library fines from elementary school.
When I was in eighth grade, moving on to eighth grade, I had to go into the principal's office with my father. And there was this unpaid fine and I didn't know what it was about. And in shop, I had left a paintbrush out and let it get all frozen and hard. And I was scared to death. Dad paid it, whipped up the money, but it was, reminds me, the first thing came to mind is this little fee that was due. And I didn't think I'd get it out of the eighth grade.
Well, and the student discipline used to be on carbon copy paper. You, they give one to the student, put one in your file, and I'm not sure what they did with the, the third one.
The pink one went to the student, I remember, because I did have one. All right. Well, I appreciate you, uh, Superintendent, we're for adding the, the RCW language to that. That probably just, I always ties that together. And obviously if it's an antiquity thing that we're moving away from, yeah, to keep that updated. Are there any other questions about our policy update? So we don't need a motion on any of that until we do the second reading on that. Okay. That takes us into our consent agenda. Moving on to, uh, Agenda Item six point zero oh five, Approval of Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
Sorry, do we wanna do policy three, uh, three, two, three, one as well?
That's what that, that's what that was. That's the policy he was just talking about. So with the, the fines. Did you have more questions about that?
No, okay. I just had, uh, two other changes that were minor, but okay, that's fine.
All right. Is there a motion to approve all items as listed and presented? The consent agenda dated March eleventh, twenty 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 four, twenty twenty four?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated March eleventh, twenty twenty four.
So a second.
On this, second.
There's a motion, a second to approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated March eleven, twenty twenty four. All in, all in favor, raise your hand. Right. Which, and item passes four to zero. All right, Agenda Item seven point zero one, Superintendent Woodward.
All right. So just a, yeah, quick update here. Uh, Jesse's gonna put a slide up on our attendance. I did not do an attendance update, I don't believe, last month, so this is just a little belated. So, uh, we're still looking really good with, with attendance. Obviously it was one of our stated goals this year to increase attendance. And so every single month, I'm, uh, pleased to say that we've had better attendance each month than we did last year. So here's February, uh, twenty-three compared to this February. You can see we're not quite two percent improvement, but you can see that almost every school had a better February as far as attendance is concerned than they did last school year. Um, January did not report out. Let me just look really quick. I think January, we were probably a, I believe, a half a percent, about a half a percent better this year as compared to last year. The, the credit absolutely goes to our, uh, uh, staff, uh, in charge here. We have, uh, someone, Melissa, oh my gosh, spacing Melissa's last name. Melissa Bowden, that's awful. Don't tell Melissa. I forgot her last name. Melissa Bowden, she is our district contact for attendance and she really works closely with all of our, uh, school staff on this. And, um, thanks to her diligence and her research and her work with OSPI, she's asked that a lot of changes were made, uh, this, uh, school year. And it's, it's created a little bit of tension at times because of how often we communicate with our families. And, and I think that can be hard when people are, are getting letters when it comes to attendance and phone calls, et cetera. And, uh, we're just trying to message, message it in a way that people aren't feeling, uh, lectured. But, but there's like, hey, we wanna support you. Uh, we wanna help get your child to school, those kinds of things. We're trying to find the sweet spot. I think our principals are doing a great job and our office staff with that. Uh, I think some of the things, uh, that are really helping the most, I think, is the increased communication for sure. And then I think I mentioned this at a, uh, uh, board meeting already this year, but just the, the care that our principals and teachers are giving to students in general and the frequent check-ins with them. And, uh, I, I just have been really impressed with, with, with the diligence. And this is going to translate into higher levels of learning. So, uh, there's that correlation. So a big thank you to our building staff for the attendance gains.
And real quick on attendance, how are we tracking with our goals? Because these schools are not a tenant school, right?
Yeah, I, I, we're, we're definitely, not all schools are meeting their goals yet. They all had varying degrees of goals. They have an overall district goal that we're ahead, ahead there. Uh, just not sure each and every school, but just about everybody's on track to meet their goal.
Would it be possible to color code it next time? Like mark the ones green that we're on track or yellow or red or?
Yeah.
For each school.
Yeah, 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 you bet. Yeah, it's a little, it's a little unpredictable, ju- just, uh, kinda like Brenda's budget report today. At this point in time, something crazy could happen, hopefully not with our boilers or anything else from a budget standpoint, where we have an, you know, something happens where we might have a dip, but yeah, I'd be happy to do that for sure. All right, couple of just other quick update items, uh, just a handful here. I can finally say this week that our draft is coming out, so that's good. It feels like every medium said, hey, in a few more weeks, a few more weeks, uh, Wednesday, we'll have our draft strategic plan going out. Uh, that'll be fantastic. The, uh, and then the week after that, we'll be running some focus groups to get feedback and we'll also be doing a thought exchange as well. Activity bus, I wanna say, thank Mike Birch and our drivers and our transportation staff to pull that off in the third, uh, sports, the spring sports season. I know there's been a lot of desire to run a bus for sure, to make sure all kids have access to our extracurricular activities. Didn't expect large, um, turnout in the first week. Last week was the first week. Uh, that'll take some time just to get our kids and families to understand that it's here. We were providing this service and, uh, we have to make sure that we're also, it's, you, you may not know this, but it's not always clean. If you have kids in sports, when kids get done with practice. So, yes, so we're trying to work with our, uh, various teams to make sure that kids know that they can leave when the bus is there and the coaches know that it's okay. And, you know, there's, there's, there's some things to work out, but nonetheless, I thanked Mike Birch, because I know it's a heavy lift mid-year to do this. And Mike's response was, uh, thank you for allowing us to do this. And what a great service mentality, uh, there. So, uh, that's going strong. Good start. Uh, Leaders in Learning, Tina left, I think. I was gonna say, congratulations, Tina's retiring. And every time we have a, a retirement, uh, with a position like that, we think of it as an opportunity to meet with staff, students, uh, parents to talk about the direction of a given school. So, uh, we're looking feedback, looking for feedback when it comes to, hey, what should we be looking for in the next leader of that particular school? And also give people an opportunity to dream a little bit and talk about, hey, what do you, wh- where do you, where are we going with this, with, with leaders? We're, we're good now. How do we take it to the next level? I asked, uh, the leader's staff if they were, would be interested in one-on-one meetings with me last week. Every single staff member signed up for a slot, so, so that was fantastic. I'm reaching out to, we randomly selected five parents to have conversations with. And, uh, hopefully I'll get a guess on each of those five. If not, we'll go to the next, uh, level in the, uh, system. And, uh, I'll be running some focus groups with students as well. And then once, uh, we've done that, I'll definitely circle back to the board to let you know what we're hearing and how that impacts, uh, future planning for, for leaders. And then finally, I mentioned this at the workshop, uh, in two weeks, we'll bring back the safety and security recommendations here to the board meeting. And, uh, uh, hopefully, perhaps, uh, ask you to make some kind of a decision on what you're comfortable with as far as us, uh, moving forward on, uh, from that list. So, so I have.
All right. That moves us on to Agenda Item eight point zero one, Board Reports.
Okay, I'll go ahead and kick us off. Um, I had the ability to go to Salem Woods, Chain Lake and Monroe High. I had the ability to go to Salem Woods, Chain Lake and Monroe High School over the past couple of weeks and continue to just be amazed at a lot of the good things that are happening, the learning that's occurring, the changes that are happening and how our building leaders continue to put one foot in front of the other, as well as our teachers and staff to make the Monroe School District a place where kids feel that they belong, where they can believe and where they can achieve. So I'm, uh, it's always just a fun time when I go and do that. And I wanted to give a special, special thank you to all those who work in our lunchrooms, to all of our custodians and to our crossing guards. Our lunchroom workers make sure that our children are fed who come in. And it, a lot of times is a thankless job and they're usually in the back. So it's always fun to go in and stop and see them on school visits and say hi and thank you. And also custodians, you keep our schools clean so that our students can learn and you take care of issues when they arise. Cannot thank you enough for doing a lot of the dirty work sometimes and putting a smile on your face and just being another friendly person that can engage kids and be there for them and has the potential to make a difference in a child's life. So, and then also our crossing guards, those of our employees who volunteer for this. As I was driving here today, I was thinking, man, they're out in all weather conditions and the rain and the cold and all of it, making sure that our children are able to cross the street safely. So just a big thank you to, to you today. I have some recognitions as far as our JRO TC drill team. They are off to regionals this weekend in Oregon City, so the fifteenth and sixteenth, which is a huge thing. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We have ten students from the Monroe School District who are on this drill team. And so I want to give a special shout out to, to Sky Valley students who are on this drill team, Clint McGowan and Jackson Dewey. And also our eight MHS students who are on the drill team, Joshua Cruz, who's also the commanding officer, Tristan Weeks, Brock Peterson, Jacob Tra, Emmeline Rodriguez, Lucas Ross and Hope Mark. I wish you the best of luck this coming weekend and I can't wait to hear about how it went and see video as well. Also, the brief, brief legislative update, because Holly is going to be sending you the TUIO updates. But basically, they voted on budget increases of two point one four billion dollars for this next school year. Some of it is going to be retroactive in both MSOC and then in MSOC is materials, oh my goodness. It's, it's all of our materials, supplies. What does the O and, O and the C stand for, Brenda? Operating costs, there we go. Okay, so there's that that's going to apply this school year. But then there is also the prototypical school staffing. There is going to be some that's retroactive for this school year as well, which that increases staff allocations for parent educators, office support and non-instructional aides. So in total, seventy-one point nine five billion dollars for schools is what the budget that was approved this legislative session. And then also in in bills that were passed, we have provisions regarding the special education safety net for students. There are, we also have a new one, SB five, four, six, two and HB two, three, three, one. These were two of the more contentious bills that were brought about this session. So I'm just gonna read these two to you because they seem to be popping up everywhere. So I just want to make sure that you kind of have a general overview. So SB five, four, six, two says, several requirements are implemented regarding the promotion of inclusive learning standards and instructional materials. OSPI is directed to review and update learning standards at all grade levels to include the histories, contributions and perspectives of LGBTQ people by December first of 2024. WASDA is required to review and update a model policy and procedure to require school districts to adopt inclusive curricula and select diverse equitable, inclusive, age-appropriate instructional materials that include the histories, contributions and perspectives of historically marginalized and underrepresented groups. School districts are required to amend their policies and procedures to incorporate all the elements of the model by October first of 2025. And then House Bill two, three, three, one, the overview, provisions regarding public school instructional and supplemental instructional materials are amended. Specifically, school districts are prohibited from refusing to approve or prohibit the use of any instructional or supplemental instructional material on the basis that it relates to or includes the study of the role and contributions of any individual or group who was a part of the protected class unless the content contains discriminatory bias. Further, it requires policies and procedures governing requested reviews and removals of instructional and supplemental instructional materials. So the note that the TUIO had on this, it just basically said, these two bills are very controversial and cause significant consternation and conversation among many school districts and school boards. There has already been conversation about some districts rejecting the required changes in one or both of these bills. Neither has any real teeth or specific consequences for not following the requirements but forward. However, please be very aware that the legislature is watching what school districts are doing or not doing. Previous adoption of legislation, usurping local control and specifically requiring sexual health education tribal curriculum and required masking during the pandemic, as a few examples, have caused similar concerns among many school districts. And again, these bills do not have any specific consequences for rejecting the requirements, although districts were threatened with the withholding of state apportionment for not following masking directives. So just to be aware, that's sort of the, the background as TUIO has put it out there for school board directors. So if you, yeah, just to save you a little reading time, I guess. Also, we have a House Bill twelve forty-eight, which requires that school districts contract for people transportation services must require the contracting employer to provide health benefits, benefits and pension contributions equivalent to those of school district classified employees. We have House Bill twenty-one eighty. So under this bill, the special education enrollment funding cap increases to sixteen percent. And I believe it was thirteen or thirteen point five previously. So there's a little bit more on that one. House Bill thirteen sixty-eight, the zero emission bus bill was adopted. So after starting as a mandate with tight timelines, this bill was rolled back and adopted in a form we could live with. Grant funding will be available. And for districts that choose to start transitioning their bus fleets from diesel to electric buses. But there is a pause for other districts and we continue to fight for the necessary infrastr- infrastructure to support the program. The final bill does not include a requirement that, with limited exceptions, as soon as the total cost of ownership of zero emission buses are at or below the total cost of ownership of diesel buses, depreciation payments will only be provided for zero emission buses. So this is, this is something that they're gonna be working on, but this is kind of a, a big thing. So I wanted to make sure I highlighted that one. We also have, let's see, House Bill twelve thirty-nine. The Office of the Education Ombuds is directed to create a simple and uniform access point for the receipt of complaints involving the elementary and secondary education system. So that's a new one as well. And then we have in, we have twenty-four ninety-four, increasing state funding for operating costs for public schools. It passed and that was delivered to the governor. So the MSOC is going to be approximately twenty-one dollars per student. And we talked a little bit about this with Brenda as well. And Brenda, you said that was gonna equate to about one hundred and how many? Hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars extra. And so that would be retroactive to this school year as well. And then the increasing the special ed funding cap. So those, there's a lot more information in the TUIO that Holly will send to you. The budget one is seventeen pages long, so enjoy the reading. But this is just sort of a main overview of some of the ones that I thought were extra important that you should know about. And then on to happier things. We have sporting events coming up this week. We have softball home game on March twelfth for the Lady Bearcats. We also have away games for the boys' baseball team. March twelfth is at Cedar Park and the sixteenth is at Lake Washington. March fourteenth, we have a boys' soccer home game. We also have track and field at Lake Stevens High School on the fourteenth, along with boys' golf at the Snohomish Golf Course. On March thirteenth, we have girls' golf at Walter Hall Golf Course. And March twelfth, we have girls' tennis at home. And on the fourteenth, they are away at Jackson. So I encourage you to get out there and support our student athletes and have a fun night out with the family. So I think that's all I've got this week.
Well, I started with carbon paper. Now I got an iPod, iPhone, a Mac, PC at work, PC at home, dual screens and the state operating system, which is like the state federal, the state budget. I wanted to share an experience I had that was really impactful. It was this last week, we had a Rotary Club interviewed a group of students for scholarships. And we had two sessions, each for four and a half hours long. And we, in that time, we interviewed these twenty students. To let you know something about the Rotary, a Rotary Club provides a scholarship, provides twelve scholarships, one thousand dollar scholarships, eight to Monroe and four to Sultan. And the students are also, in addition to that, there's some students that are including those, but in addition, become students of the month. And they're invited to the Rotary Club and have their family invited and they have an opportunity to talk and just share what their, their future plans are. To give you an idea, I want to explain this with Rotary because it ties into what we were looking for with, with the students. Rotary is a service organization. And the purpose of this scholarship is to reward students who do well at school and have a heart for volunteering and service work. We're a collection of business owners and leaders in the community who pool their resources and talents and give back to the community. It's essentially a Phil and Strout, philanthropic organization. Some of the things we've done is built Rotary Field down there next to the Boys and Girls Club, which has the Miracle League. We have the National Night Out Against Crime, partnered with the Police and Fire Department. And we have speakers at meetings for nonprofits. And we usually go ahead and fund those. So the students would come in about, and they'd be twenty minutes long. And we'd ask them twelve questions. And afterwards, we'd meet as a group, we'd discuss and evaluate the students on a scale. And I wanted to, what, what struck me is these questions, it's like for a job interview, but it's more like who this student is. So I want to read these questions and I'm gonna cover a couple of the questions and some of the answers. So the first was, what is your postgraduate plans and where do you want to be in five years and ten years? If you had a model for your life so far, what would it be and why? Define what is a good leader and who has been a good leader thus far in your life. Tell us about an obstacle in your life and how you've overcome it. What are the top areas of need in Monroe in the world? Tell us about your work and volunteer history and what was your favorite community service project? What is one way your generation differs from that of your parents? What advice would you give to someone else? What is the most important extracurricular activity and why? What was the last book you read? And can you name an elected official that was in there for fun? You know, the answers are really, really good, but what was interesting is that they were, to see how they were connected to students. And you know, this, the obstacles that these kids had really made me emotional thinking about them and, and during the interview, the poor kids come in there and they get, you know, we look at their poison, their appearance, we evaluate their leadership, their volunteering and how they present themselves. But listening to their story and the obstacles and their goals and some, sharing some things about, I'll, I'll bring up. Listen to some of these obstacles that they've had. Bulleted by her own friends, dyslexia, had depression during COVID, these are each kids, each individual kids, moving many times and making new friends, moved to Texas right before COVID. Parents divorced when I was in second grade. Identified as gay from a young age, has not spoken to my dad, my biological dad since the divorce. The anxiety has affected my family life. I'm a Christian and my parents weren't an eating disorder and low self-esteem. So you listen to these obstacles and then you listen to some of the mottos they have. Try, what's the worst that can happen? Tomorrow is another day, state, start refreshed, make it happen. Plant seeds of kindness, embrace the situation, love yourself and love others. You only live once, live life to the fullest, take risks, love others and serve others. Honor your parents and honor God. My name is Chuck and I can do anything, fill in the blank. One of the things that was, it was interesting, being older and then having kids, talking about the difference in, you know, between what, from your parents and your own age. Technology was the most mentioned, but it didn't really give any indication, just say that technology has been a, a huge difference. One, one young lady said, well, my parents have Facebook and we use TikTok and Snapchat. So they have different, different medians. The one that, that got me was that she said her dad is a baby boomer, her mom's a Gen X and she was a Gen Z. And so in terms of the way they communicate and the way they talk to one another, technology, you know, you could just see the differences. Some of the advice they would give someone. Be yourself, slow down, take a breath, look around and be present. Do the right thing even when no one was looking. There are no highs without corresponding lows. Things are hard, but they're getting better. Don't conform yourself to others. Don't be afraid of showing yourself and don't worry about the opinions of others. So these are broken out individually, but you listen to the student, what they've gone through, what their motto is, what they've done in work, what they've done in volunteering. And you, you just got a, a picture of that, of that individual. And I was writing like crazy, trying to write things down because they were so good. It's like, man, these kids have wisdom, they have knowledge, they have life experiences. But what I learned from the experience is I was able to see what our school district has brought into being through time and through resources and investment, what kids have come out of a, a K through twelve experience. And as they journeyed through life, I saw how those life experiences shaped them and made them into who they are. And then in addition to the school, there's their family, their work and those that are their friends and that also have an impact. I also saw, I saw a picture of a young adult ready to step out into the world. Caught a glimpse of how their life may unfold in the future. You know, during graduation, we had three hundred and fifty or so. And I just did a quick, quick math, trying to figure out two hundred and ninety-five school districts, doing the average. There was like a hundred thousand kids graduating. And it's like you're graduating, all right. So enjoy life, get a job, continue on. And with looking at these kids, these, these individual snapshots, and you look at them and you see what they have that holds into the future and the potential they have. It was, I gained a lot of, a lot of knowledge and they gave me a lot of hope for the future. And it gave me a better understanding of each individual student. But I also thought to myself, But I also thought to myself, well, here's forty kids out of three hundred and ninety-four high school students just in Monroe that are applying for this. And this is looking at those students. And you might think that they're more higher achievers because they, they have the resume. They've uh, done the prerequisites. They're doing AP classes. They're in sports and volunteering. So what, what about the other? Was that three hundred and forty, forty kids? Uh, where are they? You know, what plans do they have? Do they have, are they going on a similar path or are they just haven't turned in their scholarship? And do they have a plan? Are they, are they moving forward with the plan? And tying into what I've learned from our career counseling, we're doing a lot of, a lot of good things. Uh, having kids come in, getting them tested, finding out what their strengths are and directing them towards something that might be of interest. And then helping them with their college pursuit, uh, you know, about the testing you have to have and schools that are available, the scholarships, the the uh, the cost of college and such. And I know that Sean and I have also talked about uh, introducing types of planning or introducing, getting kids to think about the future at a younger age. So it's just not, you know, you're a junior, get ready to take off. I think it was like maybe in ninth grade, they start exercising this thought process and thinking about a path. Why are you going to school? What are you gonna do when you're done with school? Uh, because we want to make kids successful. Uh, we have teachers and principals and parents who have just invested a lot of time into these individuals and they should have an approach. I mean, when I got out of college or high school, I just, woo-hoo. And then went into the army and then that drove my direction. Uh, but if we have a, if the kids, I, I know we have all this in, in mind with directing kids, but if they're aware of and think about the future and where the future is going with technology and the changes that we can really have, uh, you know, we talk about achievement. Well, achievement leads to the point where they need to be able to go out in life and succeed. So that's, that's interrelated to these, you know, to the work that they do, to the, to the money, the hundred one million dollar budget, the three hundred and sixty teachers, the six hundred and forty staff, the fifty-three hundred students, fifty-seven, uh, fifty-seven hundred students. So we have all this, we're getting them along their way, getting them educated, helping them as best we can and then allow them to be successful in life. So it philosophically, I looked at this. Individually, I looked at this and uh, it just really had an impact on me. Probably the most impactful thing I've done since I've been in the school. Visited schools, principals, listened to more than one presentation, listened to Brenda explain our uh, our budget audits. So I just want to share that. It wa- it was encouraging. I learned a lot and I think that each board member, we should have a policy that each board member go through and go through an interview process like this. Uh, it gives you perspective that you'll never get at a board meeting. And I have one more question. Do you guys have a motto that you have in life? Can you share it? Anybody else?
Don't sweat the small stuff and it's all small stuff.
Mine's life's too serious. Have fun. And focus on the next task to move forward. That's on the business side. So that's why I'm always had, trying to have a little fun. Do you guys have any mottos?
I'll report back in two weeks.
Anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. James, did you have anything? Okay, I do have one, one thing I just wanted to share briefly and that was just that uh, this week I do get to hang out at Chain Lake Elementary and the watchdogs program. So you guys could be thinking of me on Wednesday as I will be running like crazy. They run hard there. So excited to hang out kids all day on Wednesday and uh, and that's the best part of this job. We need to have that. That said, it is six fourteen PM and this meeting is adjourned.